Yeah, I just emailed him.
Yeah, they just got by. I told them that I could help.
All right. I'm not sure you'll be able to. I hope. Differences. Mine is. This is not sitting on me. So I have my. Have. My. Account. And my. City account. But if people.
Oh, yeah, that would actually, that should work. Fifty-three. We have time to run to the office real quick. I have to. Have to go to the office and then I can use one of our cords because I know.
Okay.
That's why it's hard to. In your password.
Okay, well, let me just get you in and you.
Actually, it'll be. You log in, we'll plug in and then you'll control all the lead from the next street. And it'll.
When I log in, you go to the office.
So you don't sign into your city account?
No.
At all?
That's just way.
Yeah, what we're doing.
Well. In the past, I've always just called IP. And able to change it. Problem I have right now is my touchpad is over. But I now have to hook up a mouse too, so.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So, but thank you though. I appreciate.
You should let them know.
Okay, I just, I think it was Jamie who probably came. Yeah, I just emailed him, asked him to give me another. I could reach him in the morning. So, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, please.
Okay.
Oh, she says.
Oh.
Oh, she says.
Good evening. I would like to call Monday, August twenty-sixth, common council meeting in order. Clerk Toronto, I believe you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations.
Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good quality, good audio quality for council and yourself. If you would like to speak during the meeting on agenda or on an agenda item or during the privilege of the floor, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to do so is listed in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name, address, and topic you are speaking on as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. My name is full name and I live at address and I would like to speak on, for, or against agenda item. You will then be given five minutes to speak. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we would like to welcome Father La Croix to From Christ the King to come up for the invocation. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings and freedoms we enjoy as citizens of this local community. And we give you thanks for the men and women of this council who give of their time and talent in service to their neighbors. We ask you to bless the deliberations of the council this evening. Fill these council members with all of the virtues they will need for a fruitful discussion. The wisdom to discern your will for our community, the prudence to know how and when to respond, the courage to speak the difficult truth, and the charity to collaborate in a spirit of mutual respect. And most of all, fill them with a genuine love and concern for the dignity of all those they serve and represent. We pray that this evening's meeting may help them act in accord with your holy will so that our neighbors are protected from all harm and are free to flourish as your beloved children. We ask all this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Then please for the pledge of belief. Clerk Toronto, you call the roll please.
President McBride.
Present.
Vice President Niskoski.
Present.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Present.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Present.
All nine present.
Thank you. At this time, we will have a report from Subcommittee on Minutes.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the August twelfth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you. I would now like to entertain a motion regarding Subcommittee many on minutes from August twelve. Second. It's been moved in second and all in favor. Any opposition? The motion's carried. I would now entertain a motion to resolve to the committee of the whole.
The move.
Second. It's been moved in second and all in favor. Any opposition? The motion's carried.
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading in public hearing. I wish to share with you that bills that will be given a second reading in public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting at the public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. Clerk Toronto, would you please give Bill thirty-six dash twenty-four a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located five one zero one Nemeth Parkway, Councilmanic District number one, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair. There's zoning and annexation committee met this afternoon and we bring this bill to you with a favorable recommendation.
Right. The petitioner's president asks that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Skip Morell, Principal Development Planner with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. We're looking at Bill thirty-six dash twenty-four, which is for fifty-one zero one Nymphs Parkway. The property owner is Service Area Number Four LLC and the request is a rezoning from, it doesn't currently have zoning, to I Industrial. So this is a view from the street there and then aerial view gives a better picture. So looking at from a local context, this area has a mix of industrial and office uses with an increase in companies in the past decade. Looking more specifically at the property itself, this is built in nineteen sixty and has historically been used as an Indiana State Police Post until twenty twenty-one when it was sold by the state of Indiana. The property was recently, last week, in the plan commission where the subdivision to create the legal lot was completed. And this is kind of the final phase in that which would be assigning it a zoning since it was previously right of way. As the zoning I Industrial, it kind of matches with the context of the surrounding area and it allows for the proposed use for professional office building space. This rezoning would be consistent with the South Bend Comprehensive Plan, objective of retaining existing businesses and recruiting new ones to the city. It's also consistent with the future land use plan which identifies this area for light industrial. And this rezoning comes to you from the plan commission with a favorable recommendation.
All right, thank you. As the other presenter, would you like to add anything to the presentation? Please state your name and address for the record.
Terry Lang from the Whitman Office. Our address is fourteen oh two Mishwaka Avenue here in South Bend. Skip's analysis there is correct. It is the old state police post. It had been created back in the sixties before the zoning ordinance went into effect. And with it being part of the highway portion of it, it has since been deemed to be a residual parcel no longer needed by the state police and was put up for sale. My client purchased that property at the sale and we're looking to zone it appropriately. Properties on to the east and west of this are zoned similar. And therefore, we're not asking for anything that would be intrusive to the neighborhood right there. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions for the petitioner? If not, we'll now go to the public hearing. Clerk Toronto, is anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill thirty-six dash twenty-four?
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in opposition.
At this point, the public hearing on Bill thirty-six dash twenty-four is now closed. Any statements by any council members? As the first district representative, again, thank you for taking a piece of property that had been, you know, vacant and we're looking forward to something productive coming out of it. So thank you very much. I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill thirty-six dash twenty-four.
Motion to bring this bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
This second.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Warner.
Present.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Present.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Present.
All nine present.
Thank you. At this time, we will have a report from Subcommittee on Minutes.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the August twelfth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you. I would now like to entertain a motion regarding Subcommittee many on minutes from August twelve. Second. It's been moved in second and all in favor. Any opposition? The motion's carried.
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading in public hearing. I wish to share with you that bills that will be given a second reading in public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting at the public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. Clerk Toronto, would you please give Bill thirty-six dash twenty-four a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located five one zero one Nemeth Parkway, Councilmanic District number one, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair. There's zoning and annexation committee met this afternoon and we bring this bill to you with a favorable recommendation.
All right. The petitioner's president asks that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Skip Morell, Principal Development Planner with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. We're looking at Bill thirty-six dash twenty-four, which is for fifty-one zero one Nymphs Parkway. The property owner is Service Area Number Four LLC and the request is a rezoning from, it doesn't currently have zoning, to I Industrial. So this is a view from the street there and then aerial view gives a better picture. So looking at from a local context, this area has a mix of industrial and office uses with an increase in companies in the past decade. Looking more specifically at the property itself, this is built in nineteen sixty and has historically been used as an Indiana State Police Post until twenty twenty-one when it was sold by the state of Indiana. The property was recently, last week, in the plan commission where the subdivision to create the legal lot was completed. And this is kind of the final phase in that which would be assigning it a zoning since it was previously right of way. As the zoning I Industrial, it kind of matches with the context of the surrounding area and it allows for the proposed use for professional office building space. This rezoning would be consistent with the South Bend Comprehensive Plan, objective of retaining existing businesses and recruiting new ones to the city. It's also consistent with the future land use plan which identifies this area for light industrial. And this rezoning comes to you from the plan commission with a favorable recommendation.
All right, thank you. As the other presenter, would you like to add anything to the presentation? Please state your name and address for the record.
Terry Lang from the Whitman Office. Our address is fourteen oh two Mishwaka Avenue here in South Bend. Skip's analysis there is correct. It is the old state police post. It had been created back in the sixties before the zoning ordinance went into effect. And with it being part of the highway portion of it, it has since been deemed to be a residual parcel no longer needed by the state police and was put up for sale. My client purchased that property at the sale and we're looking to zone it appropriately. Properties on to the east and west of this are zoned similar. And therefore, we're not asking for anything that would be intrusive to the neighborhood right there. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions for the petitioner? If not, we'll now go to the public hearing. Clerk Toronto, is anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill thirty-six dash twenty-four?
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in opposition.
At this point, the public hearing on Bill thirty-six dash twenty-four is now closed. Any statements by any council members? As the first district representative, again, thank you for taking a piece of property that had been, you know, vacant and we're looking forward to something productive coming out of it. So thank you very much. I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill thirty-six dash twenty-four.
Motion to bring this bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
This second.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
All nine.
All right. Bill thirty-six dash twenty-four, we send the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Toronto, would you give Bill thirty-seven dash twenty-four a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the first north-south alley east of Main Street between LaSalle Avenue on the south and south of Madison Street on the north.
Right. The committee report.
Yes, there is, Chair. This was heard this afternoon in Public Works and Property Vacation Committee and it was given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
All right. We see that the petitioner's president asks that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Good evening. Angela Smith with Dan Charner and Associates, offices located at sixteen forty-three Commerce Drive. This is effectively a paper alley that still exists on a map but not in reality. Where we're located between Martin Luther King Junior Drive, Main Street, LaSalle, and Madison. So it's over there where the Burger King is and there's Beacon parking lots. So as Beacons looking to get ready to develop that whole area for the lifestyle district, we were looking at this and we realized there was still a paper alley there even though there's no curb cut and there's no sign of one since prior to two thousand and ten. And so we were doing some housekeeping and cleaning that up and we ask for your favorable recommendation to the council of the whole.
All right. Is there anyone else with you that would like to speak? All right. Councilmembers, would you, do you have any questions?
I'll clear it up today.
All right. Now we'll go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Toronto, is there anyone from the public looking to speak in favor of Bill thirty-seven dash twenty-four?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Is there anyone looking to speak in opposition? At this point, the public hearing on Bill thirty-seven dash twenty-four is now closed. I will now entertain a motion.
I make a motion to send thirty-seven twenty-four to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers. Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
All nine.
All right. Bill thirty-six dash twenty-four, we send the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Toronto, would you give Bill thirty-seven dash twenty-four a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the first north-south alley east of Main Street between LaSalle Avenue on the south and south of Madison Street on the north.
Right. The committee report.
Yes, there is, Chair. This was heard this afternoon in Public Works and Property Vacation Committee and it was given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
All right. We see that the petitioner's president asks that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Good evening. Angela Smith with Dan Charner and Associates, offices located at sixteen forty-three Commerce Drive. This is effectively a paper alley that still exists on a map but not in reality. Where we're located between Martin Luther King Junior Drive, Main Street, LaSalle, and Madison. So it's over there where the Burger King is and there's Beacon parking lots. So as Beacons looking to get ready to develop that whole area for the lifestyle district, we were looking at this and we realized there was still a paper alley there even though there's no curb cut and there's no sign of one since prior to two thousand and ten. And so we were doing some housekeeping and cleaning that up and we ask for your favorable recommendation to the council of the whole.
All right. Is there anyone else with you that would like to speak? All right. Councilmembers, would you, do you have any questions?
I'll clear it up today.
All right. Now we'll go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Toronto, is there anyone from the public looking to speak in favor of Bill thirty-seven dash twenty-four?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Is there anyone looking to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
At this point, the public hearing on Bill thirty-seven dash twenty-four is now closed. I will now entertain a motion.
I make a motion to send thirty-seven twenty-four to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers. Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
All nine.
All right. It's been, Bill thirty-seven dash twenty-four will now go to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I would like to entertain a motion to accept substitute Bill thirty-one dash twenty-four.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. This is a public hearing only. So Clerk Toronto, would you please give thirty-one dash twenty-four a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, anything to bring, to bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana and amending the zoning ordinance for property located seventeen zero two three Helper Street, Councilmanic District number four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is. The zoning and annexation committee met this afternoon and we bring the substitute Bill thirty-one twenty-four to the full council after a great discussion with a favorable report.
All right, petitioner. We see that you're here again. Would you give your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill before us?
Skip Morell, Principal Development Planner with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. And this is for substitute Bill thirty-one dash twenty-four, looking at seventeen oh two three Hepler Street. And the request is to annex that area into the city and rezone it from currently our single-family district in St. Joseph County to U2 urban neighborhood two in the city of South Bend. This is a kind of a view on the ground. So as you're coming up Hepler Street from the southeast, a view from the southwest and similar to the previous one, I think. First, let's look at the, so the project. The concept right now is on this seven and a half acre property that's going to be annexed into the city. A proposed development of forty-one units with thirty-eight shown as duplexes and three as single-family. So it'd have access both from the south side on Hepler as well as coming from the west on Creek Bottom Drive. And while the initial conceptual plans are provided, ultimately, this bill that we're looking at is for the annexation into the city as well as the rezoning to urban neighborhood two. So any conceptual plans would have to go through the full plan review process and be approved and meet all city standards. So this is kind of a view overhead and that parcel highlighted in white is the area that's proposed to be annexed into the city. So looking first at sort of the broader context, as you look to the west, that's a suburban neighborhood one zoned area in the city of South Bend. As you move to the east, you see those are manufactured homes in the city of Mishwaka. To the southeast, those are apartments in the city of Mishwaka. And then as you move south, you get into some more civic spaces like school and churches. Looking specifically at the parcel, there originally was a house at the southern end that existed between nineteen fifty-one and twenty twenty-two. That house is no longer there. There was also a pole barn and a shed built around the same time in nineteen fifty-one. Those still exist in the middle of the parcel. The annexation and rezoning is consistent with the South Bend Comprehensive Plan, objective of encouraging residential units that contain a mix of housing types, sorry, a mix of housing types, densities, price ranges, and amenities. It's also consistent with South Bend's annexation policy that the extension of city services and utilities beyond the city limits should not occur unless it furthers the annexation policies of the city. Ultimately, looking at this project, it's responsible development and growth to require that properties contiguous to the city are annexed into the city upon development so that they're developed under the city standards. Additionally, it's responsible development to allow this residential development kind of surrounding, surrounded by other residential properties to kind of provide a mixture of housing types and densities to the area. And this annexation rezoning comes to you from the plan commission with a favorable recommendation. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, councilmembers, do you have any, any questions? We talked about this very extensively.
Just a comment. When the presenter comes up, I'd just like to not necessarily go into as long as we were today, even though I know this is a zoning issue, but just to briefly give a summary of the exciting possibilities to paint the picture for the audience.
So I'll ask that the other petitioner please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Chris Goduski, Evan Marsh Consultants, three fifteen West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. Thank you for the positive staff report and the positive committee meeting hearing. Yeah, this is a forty-two lot development, medium density, can use city services, two access points. Kind of makes sense how it's the very eastern edge of South Bend. It's the northwest and south sides are portions of the city. And it's in, um, review. If this goes forward for approval, that will go for a major subdivision and follow all the city's standards. And I can answer any questions you have.
Council members, do you have any questions? All right.
Cool.
If none, we'll go to the public hearing. Clerk Torado, is there anyone here who would, uh?
I do not see anyone from the public or online, I'm sorry.
Jesse Davis, P O Box ten two oh five, South Bend, Indiana. So I just had a couple of questions. Number one, am I correct, is the buildings in the lower right corners that Hickory Village Apartments? And this is Hepler Street would be going west of there? And if we're going to take city services in there, are we also going to include properties on the north side of Hepler Street? Cause I know there's a lot of septic in there still and they're very old septics. And so if they're gonna take sewer service in there, they should make sure that they, uh, offer service on the other side of the road. And, uh, is, is there any houses or anything in this area right now?
No.
That are going to be tore down? I thought there was like a church there and some houses and so I'm just kind of curious if I'm in the right area.
So I can try and answer your questions in turn. The first one is, that's right, it's, uh, Hepler is going to the west there. And then this is just on the north side. The, uh, school and the church, you can kind of see them at the very bottom of the screen. Those are to the south. So there was, uh, just one single-family residential house on the south end that was demolished. And then to answer the question on the services, uh, this property would be utilizing city services and the petitioner might be able to speak better to that. The properties to the, I'm sure you're referring to the ones to the southeast and to the east. That's, so if you, yeah, to the southeast and to the east, those are in Mishawaka. So those would be serviced through that city. That's, that's where the new development is proposed. So that's right, so that the area highlighted in white is to the north. Yep. Don't know if the petitioner wants to add any comments.
Just for clarifying purposes, yeah, like Skip said, this property had one house from built in the thirties, had a little horse ring and a barn. Those would be demolished if not already. There's probably one septic which would be, you know, properly managed and taken care of. So it was really a rural site for its existence.
So the neighbors won't have anything north of it, I mean, in front of here.
What's north of this is Judy Creek. So it's bound by a big wooded, you know, grassy area.
Well, thank you very much. This was just the pub, is there anyone, um, wishing to speak in favor or opposition?
I do not see anyone else wishing to speak in favor online or in person.
All right. And this was just the public hearing portion and we won't take any action on it. All right.
I may.
Yes, sir.
Have just a brief comment, just to reiterate, uh, this afternoon's comment that, uh, the subdivision there, the streets are original since it was built in the mid eight, the eighties and, uh, are in, in need of paving and we're gonna put some more traffic on it. So I would encourage staff to, uh, relook at the Pacer rating and evaluate, uh, you know, after the construction. Um, and hopefully there won't be much construction going through the neighborhood there while it's being built. But, uh, reconsider that, uh, existing neighborhood there and subdivision just to the west, uh, for paving. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? If not, I will now entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been, excuse me. Excuse me, clerk Torado. Oh. This, this was just public hearing and we weren't taking any action on it. Right? All right. So, um, it's been motion, there's been a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposition? We will now be joined back into the full council.
The full council is now back in session. This is the portion where bills are given a third reading and actions taken regarding bills that just was heard in the committee of the whole. Clerk Torado, would you please give Bill thirty-six twenty-four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located five-one-zero-one Newman's Parkway, council medic district number one in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Councilor Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole?
Yes, uh, Bill thirty-six dash twenty-four was heard in the committee of the whole and it comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill thirty-six twenty-four.
For passage.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Torado, the role, please.
Council member Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Council member Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Council member Warner. Council member Lee.
Aye.
Council member White.
Aye.
Council member Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Council member Gooden Rogers. Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill thirty-six twenty-four has been adopted. Clerk Torado, will you please give Bill thirty-seven twenty-four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the first north southeast, south alley east of Main Street between LaSalle Avenue on the south and south of Madison Street on the north.
Thank you. Councilor Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole?
Yes, thirty-seven dash twenty-four was heard in the committee of the whole and it comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now like to entertain a motion regarding Bill thirty-seven dash twenty-four.
Move for passage.
Second.
Clerk Torado, the role, please.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
Council member Gooden Rogers. Council member Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Council member White.
Aye.
Council member Lee. Council member Warner.
Aye.
Council member Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Council member Dr. Davis.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill thirty-seven twenty-four has been adopted. Resolutions. Clerk Torado, will you please give Resolution twenty-four twenty-seven a reading?
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, adopting a written fiscal plan and establishing a policy for the provision of services to the Fox Creek annexation area in Clay Township.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, this was heard today in our zoning and annexation committee, and we proudly bring this to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Center, thank you.
Uh, good evening. Michael DeVita, principal planner with, uh, city's Department of Community Investment, offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. So there's fiscal plans for a seven and a half acre annexation that has been requested by the property owner of a parcel of the northwest corner of Hepler Street and Hickory Road. Uh, as you heard a moment ago, a residential development of duplexes is proposed. No capital improvements are proposed by the city now as part of the annexation. Water and sewer are both available along Creek Bottom Drive. Pieces of the Hepler Street and Hickory Road rights of way would be added to the city. The, uh, Fox Creek annexation area would be added to the common council's fourth district and served by Police Beat eleven, Fire Station Three, Emergency Medic nine, and Neighborhood Services and Enforcement Area six with response times comparable to other areas of the city. So then I would ask for the council's adoption of the fiscal plan for this annexation, but we happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Seeing none? Thank you so much. Um, I will turn back. Let me see, where am I? See if there's any public comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Resolution twenty-four twenty-seven? Welcome back.
Chris Goduski, Evan Marsh, I represent, again, uh, Tim Saylor and the developers. This will bring from vacant ground, farmed ground to, uh, housing will bring new, uh, property taxes, income taxes for the household people, new residents to the city. The capital improvements are none since these are private roads, so there'd be no long-term maintenance. So those landowners are taking some of the burden of maintenance as well. So I would say that this is a pretty positive, um, aspect for the city financially and would ask for your approval. I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Clerk Torado, do you see anyone else wishing to speak in favor of Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-seven?
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in favor.
Thank you. With the same said, do you, is there anyone here or online wishing to speak in opposition of Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-seven?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
Thank you. At this time, the public portion is now closed. Counsel, I'll turn to you if there's any final comments. If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move for the adoption of this bill.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Torado, the role.
Council member Gooden Rogers. Council member Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Council, council member White. Council member Lee. Council member Warner. Council member Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Council member Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-seven has been adopted. Clerk Torado, will you please give Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-eight a reading?
A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as seventeen-ten North Sheridan Street, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-two-eight, as an economic revaluation area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Hoosier Tank and Manufacturing LLC.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, President McBride, uh, Resolution twenty-four twenty-eight, uh, was initially heard, the designating resolution was heard, uh, our last meeting and approved. And, uh, this confirming resolution was heard this afternoon, uh, before the community investment committee and comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you so much. Welcome presenter.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mark DiNatare, for manager of business development with offices on fourteenth floor of this building. Before you today is Bill twenty-four twenty-eight, which is the confirming resolution for a five-year personal property tax abatement for property to be installed at seventeen-ten North Sheridan Street. Uh, as mentioned, this bill is a continuation of the designated resolution adopted in the prior meeting on the twelfth. Since we covered the project a few weeks ago, provide a quick recap. The petitioner for the personal property tax abatement is Hoosier Tank and Manufacturing LLC. Uh, the company has been operating out of South Bend since nineteen ninety-one, and they manufacture steel air reservoirs for the heavy-duty truck and trailer industries. The company is planning a four million dollar investment to expand the capacity of their assembly line. And this expansion will require the, the company to hire an additional fifteen employees with a total annual payroll of seven hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, this is in addition to the current hundred and twelve companies on payroll. Uh, regarding the tax impacted that proposed abatement, the company paid a little under ninety thousand with the most recent tax year. During the term of the abatement, an additional three hundred and twenty thousand dollars of new taxes are estimated to come from this investment. Of these new tax dollars, around two hundred and twenty-seven thousand will be abated under the terms of this abatement, and ninety-two thousand will be paid after the abatement period ends. An additional hundred and thirty-nine thousand in estimated new taxes will be paid between years, uh, six through ten. Uh, so please note that these are just the new tax dollars generated from the investment and does not reflect the current taxes under the business. This, uh, last slide provides a more detailed rundown of the annual tax, uh, impact of the abatement. Uh, summarizes the request before you today. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. At this time, I will turn to counsel. Do you have any questions of the petitioner? Seeing none, I will turn now to the public portion. Clerk Torado, do you see anyone wishing to speak in favor of Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-eight?
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Thank you. Same said, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-eight?
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in opposition.
With that being said, the public portion is now closed. Counsel, is there any final comments of the petitioner?
Abandoned and, and, and retaining employees and then the four million dollar investment that they made in their facility.
Thank you. With that being said, I would like to entertain a motion regarding Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-eight.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Been moved in second. Clerk Torado, the role, please.
Vice President Niskoski.
Aye.
Council member Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Council member Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Council member Warner.
Aye.
Council member Lee.
Aye.
Council member White.
Aye.
Council member Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Council member Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-eight has been adopted. Bills on first reading. Clerk Torado, will you please give Bill forty dash twenty-four a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the first east-west alley, south of, south of LaSalle Street from the west, right-west lane of Michigan Street to the east, right-west lane of north-south alley for a distance of one hundred and sixty feet and width of fourteen feet.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill forty dash twenty-four to Public Works and Property Vacation for public hearing and third reading for September ninth.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motions carried. Clerk Torado, will you please give Bill forty-one dash twenty-four a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located seven-thirty-four Notre Dame Avenue, council medic district number four in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill forty-one dash twenty-four to the South Bend Plan Commission on nine sixteen and to Z N A for public hearing and third reading for September twenty-third.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motions carried. Clerk Torado, will you please give Bill forty-two dash twenty-four a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located eight-twenty-nine South Twenty-seventh Street, council medic district number three in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill forty-two dash twenty-four to South Bend Plan Commission for nine sixteen and to Z N A for public hearing and third reading on nine twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motions carried. Clerk Torado, will you please give Bill forty-three dash twenty-four a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located five-six-one-four Main Street, council medic district number five in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill forty-three dash twenty-four to South Bend Plan Commission on nine sixteen and to Z N A for the, uh, to the zoning and annexation committee for public hearing and third reading on September twenty-third.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motions carried. Clerk Torado, will you please give Bill forty-four dash twenty-four a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, annexing to and bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana, and amending the zoning ordinance for property located at two-five-four-seven-one, two-five-four-eight-one, and two-five-four-nine-one Cleveland Road, council medic district number one in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill forty-four twenty-four to the South Bend Plan Commission on nine sixteen, to Z N A for committee for public hearing on ten twenty-eight and for third reading on eleven twelve, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motions carried. Counsel, is there any unfinished business?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
I'm just checking in, um, again with the September meeting for the, um, uh, maybe to address the, um, privilege floor and some other things. Is it September twenty-three? You said September nine was not available. Just wanted to check with September twenty-three.
Yep, I will get with you after I left my calendar in my office. You said September twenty-third. I will look at that and get with you as soon as I leave from here, Dr. Davis. I apologize, I didn't bring my calendar.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Is there any other unfinished business? Seeing none, is there any new business? Seeing none, I will turn now to the privilege of the floor.
If I may, under new business, I just want to remind council members about the next budget meeting that's going to be on August 28 at 5:30 here in the council chambers. It will not be an off-site meeting. Thank you, President McBride.
You're welcome. All right, privilege of the floor. At this time, I would like to state as routine disrespectful root or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech or actions as well as verbal attacks on any person may result in the individual without notice being forfeited the remainder his or her allotted time. We will have 30 minutes for this portion of the meeting, and individuals have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jesse Davis, PO Box 205, South Bend, Indiana. I'm going to make this quick. I'm just curious if anybody has heard any feedback or has any input on the Frank's Place issue that was brought to you several meetings ago, because they behave theirself after Excise paid them a visit for about four or five days, and then it's just kind of went right back to the same thing. And the neighborhood over there is really sick and tired of it, and we don't want to have to close them down. But if they don't get things under control, I promise you, I will for one be at the next licensing hearing, doing everything in my power to shut that place down permanently. So that needs to be gotten under control by someone, whether it's a visit from a council member or a meeting with the chief of police. But there were conversations with the owner, Mr. Singh, and he promised that he would get things under control. But like I said, about four days, it wasn't too bad, and then it went right back to the same thing again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Stu Castle, 4022 Kennedy Drive. I've been known as a budget enthusiast, and I've worked with controllers John Murphy, Jennifer Hockenhall, and Daniel Parker. I've never experienced such blatant disregard for accountability and transparency as I have with this controller, council, and administration. My emails listing all the missing financial reports to you were ignored. My APRA's for them, the cash reports, the encumbrance reports, and the annual comprehensive financial report were all denied. These are public tax dollars that are to be open to public scrutiny. This has gone unnoticed by others in the community. Apparently, this is also the case with the South Bend School Corporation. A group of citizens is working on a citizen request for a grand jury and special prosecutor to examine why financial records are being hidden from the public to discover if there is corruption, collusion, or misappropriation. They plan to investigate the city finances as well. Between the school corporation's over $200 million budget and the city's over $400 million budget, that's $600 million of local public tax money that is not properly accounted for. As the council, you are responsible for its prudent spending and transparency. There is over a $16 million deficit, which amounts to a failure to follow your oath of office. A deficit budget amounts to misappropriation of funds. Last year, you rubber-stamped a deficit budget without consulting the annual comprehensive financial report that is legally due in June because it did not come out until after you passed the budget. It looks like this will be the same. I have provided them with the emails I sent you requesting information, and my denied APRA's by the city. I am told this joint stonewalling amounts to collusion between city administration and the council, who are supposed to act as a check and balance to each other. Although you find it easy to consistently ignore me, I look forward to seeing how you answer a grand jury. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sarah Foster, 1138 College Streets. Tonight, I come before the council once again to demand Vice President Sheila Niskowski's resignation due to her assault and attempted battery on my husband, Logan Foster, on May 13. 105 days with zero accountability for these actions is simply unacceptable.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Linda Bryant, 3220 White Maple Court. The taxpayers of South Bend, Indiana are urging South Bend Common Council to utilize the authority granted to them in Chapter Two, Article One, Section Two, to investigate whether Sheila or David Niskowski or any of their dependents possess a financial interest in Niskowski Plumbing, Inc. This inquiry should cover aspects such as ownership or income from the company. Furthermore, we request a clarification on why Common Council Vice President Sheila Niskowski failed to submit a 2024 conflict of interest disclosure to the State Board of Accounts, considering her roles as Vice President to the Common Council, Chair of the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee, Chair of the Personnel and Finance Committee. It is imperative to address any potential conflicts of interest, especially given that her family's company has received over $400,000 in payments within the first six weeks of 2024, while she chairs the committee responsible for overseeing the awarding of contracts to her family's business. It is important to note that just in 2021, Vice President Sheila Niskowski and her dependents owned 80% of Niskowski Plumbing, Inc., the same company she miraculously claims not to have any pecuniary interest in in 2024. We, the people of whom you were elected to represent, are asking for this investigation to be started as soon as possible. The taxpayers are also asking for Sheila Niskowski's resignation for her assault on a local journalist and media member, Logan Foster, in the council chambers, May 13, 2024.
Thank you.
John Foster, 132 Chapin Street. On May 30, 2024, I submitted a properly filed complaint with the Rules Committee of the South Bend Common Council regarding Sheila Niskowski's assault on Logan Foster. The council's Bob Palmer has attempted to suppress the complainant's speech on the subject citing municipal code violations. What does the code actually say? Mr. Palmer, the code you reference states, "Refer the complaint to the proper legal advisor or other person designated by the committee for such purpose, who shall perform a preliminary investigation and report back to the committee as soon as possible for their next meeting, where a recommendation as to the nature and scope of any further action on the case is then made. If the committee determines the complaint does not allege facts sufficient to constitute a code or statutory violation, the complaint shall be dismissed and the complainant and council member so notified. All actions and all records relating to the preliminary investigation shall be confidential." Mr. Palmer, the code clearly indicates that the preliminary investigation must be conducted by an external legal advisor or other designated individual, and only the process is confidential. Furthermore, it is stated that you must notify the complainant when dismissing the case. The code does not impose a gag order on the complainant simply for submitting a complaint. Additionally, it does not require you, Bob Palmer, to disclose the names of the voting members in the executive session or the manner in which each member voted. If anyone violated the code you claimed was preached, it was you, Mr. Palmer. The public would not have been aware that Affilia Rogers, Sharon McBride, and Troy Warner voted unanimously to absolve Sheila Niskowski from assaulting Logan Foster unless you, Mr. Bob Palmer, informed us in writing in July 9, 2024, that those members voted in that manner. To the three members who voted to absolve Sheila Niskowski from assaulting Logan Foster on May 13, 2024, Troy Warner, Sharon McBride, and Affilia Golden Rogers, I firmly believe that you are now co-conspirators to the assault on Mr. Foster due to your blatant regards for the rules, ethics, and decorum. To the remaining five members, where is your action? You have an opportunity to correct this injustice. If Vice President Sheila Niskowski refuses to step down, again, I am requesting that you remove her from the committee assignments. It's been over three months. This is unacceptable. Do your job.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brendan Crumlish, 1091 Riverside Drive, and a local businessman with an office at 3215 Sugar Maple Court in South Bend. I am here tonight as the president of Businesses United IV. We are a corporation representing over 25 South Bend businesses and still growing. We are seeking fairness for the truly homeless in our community as well as greater fiscal responsibility from our local government. And lastly, fairness and freedom for all media platforms to share and report on the actions of our government. All this is transparent and for the genuine improvement of the city of South Bend. Businesses United and the taxpayers of South Bend urge the South Bend Common Council to utilize the authority granted to them under Chapter Two, Article One, Section Two, to investigate whether Sheila or David Niskowski or any of their dependents possess a financial interest in Niskowski Plumbing Incorporated. This inquiry should cover aspects such as ownership or income from the company. Furthermore, we request a clarification on why Common Council Vice President Sheila Niskowski failed to submit a 2024 conflict of interest disclosure to the State Board of Accounts, considering her roles as Vice President of the Common Council, Chair of the Public Works Committee, Vacation Committee, and Chair of the Personnel and Finance Committee. It is imperative to address any potential conflicts of interest, especially given that her family's company has already received over $400,000 in payments within the first six months of this year, while she still chairs the committee responsible for overseeing the awarding of those contracts to her family's business. It is important to note that just in 2021, Vice President Niskowski and her dependents owned 80% of Niskowski Plumbing, that same company miraculously claims not to have any pecuniary interest. Again, we are all here to ask Councilwoman Niskowski to resign her position on this elected Board of City Representatives. This council must uphold the municipal codes. You have the greatest responsibilities to uphold the law in our community. Please exercise them by removing her from this council and all committee assignments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Doris Brown. My address is 2203 West Washington Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46628. I would like to talk about the Fusion Fest. I would like to begin by saying I love beautiful things. I like displaying beautiful things. I like selling beautiful things. I have applied last year to the Fusion Fest. I was denied. I applied this year for the Fusion Fest. I was denied. I would like to know why I was denied. I know you guys probably don't have the answer, but I would like to know why. I know that it's under the city. The park is under the city. I have been told by several people that have been accepted for the Fusion Fest that they had friends that put words in for them. Well, if I knew the case, if that was the case, I know about four or five people on the board that I could have known about. I could have asked them to put a word in for me. I have a brother and a niece that is friends to the mayor. So I didn't think that was right for the process. The process needs to be checked and see why it's certain people being approved. Some people, it's not being approved. I'm not the only person that's irritated about this. I still wants to be in the Fusion Fest 2024. I am a registered voter. I am a resident of the city of South Bend. I have been here all my life. They bring people in from the outside to be a part of Fusion Fest. I just want to know what is the reason, what's going on. I called after I received the denied letter. I talked to Anastasia Davis, and she said that they have over 200 applicants. Well, I understand that, but I have been here all my life. So why bring other people from the outside to be vendors and not take care of your own in the city of South Bend? Like I said, I have been here all my life. I am a taxpayer. I am a homeowner. So there's been several things. I've been in business for 30 years. 16 years in a storefront. The other years, I have been going to different events. The city of South Bend is the only city, my city, the city that I love, have denied me. I have been to Michigan Walker. I have been to Michigan. I have been to Illinois. Nobody have a problem. The city of South Bend is the only one that has denied me. So I asked her, what is the appeal process? She said, there's not an appeal process. It should be an appeal process. When someone has been denied of something and it's under the city, it should be an appeal process. So I'm still asking, and just like they bring in vendors from the outside, they probably have nice things just as well. I'm not saying don't go to the outside, but take care of your people in South Bend first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Foster. I reside at 132 Chapin Street, South Bend, Indiana. On May 13, 2024, South Bend Common Council Vice President Sheila Niskowski assaulted my son and attempted battery in a distressing encounter that occurred just a few feet away from me in that corner over there. I was forced to witness an elected official assault my son, my disabled son. My son's history of childhood cancer, a childhood stroke, a lifelong physical disability resulted from these conditions have been communicated to the council members through both emails and in-person discussions, including by my son himself. Niskowski cannot claim ignorance regarding my son's disability, yet she refuses to confront and attacked him in this very room. This is difficult, and I'm shaking all over because of what I witnessed, not because I can't speak in front of people. So please excuse this. She made a deliberate choice, deliberate to assault a young man, a disabled person, and a member of the media. Furthermore, Niskowski employs, employed, excuse me, aggravated coercive tactics, demanding that he cease his investigation into her family's plumbing contracts and other business dealings. It is imperative that this council, that would be all of you, holds Niskowski accountable for her actions immediately. To Sheila Niskowski, from the mother from the mother of the young man you abused, a woman who witnessed an assault, and a human who watched your violent act, you need to resign from your position today.
30 seconds, ma'am.
To the remaining eight council members, shame on you. The time to act was May 13, 2024. It is August 26, 2024. It's never too late to do the right thing. Act today. The public is watching.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Yes, it's Logan Foster, 1138 College Street. I must reiterate the importance of allowing the floor to speak freely without interjection from the chair or interruptions from the parliamentarian. It is imperative, given the recent history where my voice was unceremoniously dismissed, that we revisit the matter at hand concerning David Niskowski's 2024 contract with the city of South Bend. Contrary to claims made, evidence clearly shows that David's name, signature, and license are integrated within the documents of the 2024 submission to the Board of Public Works Utility Line Repair Program. So I ask, what consequences will the chair and parliamentarian face for curtailing the public's right to express their views on significant community issues? The chair and parliamentarian have sought to assert that David Niskowski's contract bears no relevance to the city, dismissing its validity for 2024. What will be the repercussions for the legal counsel who misadvised his colleagues? Thus enabling the chair to silence valid discourse. Where's the accountability for these misguided assertions? Will either of you, the chair or the parliamentarian, extend an apology for your misjudgments? Mr. Palmer, your role demands that you offer legal opinions only when requested. Yet you provided unsolicited advice that led to incorrect conclusions, misleading the council when they sought clarification. Will you, at the very least, apologize to me and the taxpayers for your inadequate performance in recent months? Your misuse, Mr. Palmer, in misinterpretation of the municipal code to suppress dialogue, particularly through attempts to impose gag orders on those who submitted complaints to the Rules Committee, is completely unacceptable. The taxpayers deserve far better than what you have offered us. Lastly, I turn my attention to Sheila Niskowski. Nearly four months ago, you assaulted me. Four months have elapsed since the incident where accountability for your assault is sorely lacking. The taxpayers expect you to face the music for your actions in this very chamber.
30 seconds, sir.
We demand that you step down from your position today. The time has come to prioritize accountability and integrity over personal interests. Uphold the values you were elected to represent. Do the right thing and step down for the sake of our community and its trust. Niskowski, you lost the trust in our community. You lost the trust in the taxpayers, and I bet you lost the trust in your fellow council members.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, this meeting stands adjourned. Good night. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you see anyone online?
There is no one else online or from the public wishing to speak on the privilege of the floor.
Thank you so much. Good night.